Did you send them the last ones? Nope. You can give it to me if it's related.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, we are all linked up. All council members are present. We will get started. The meeting order, Joint Council Fire Protection District Board reading for March 16, 2021. We have the flag, please. Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mariam Amadamos. Councilmember David Orol. Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you. Now moved on to report on closed session confirmation reportable action. Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. You convened an open session at 5:00 PM as a council and a fire board to address matters, agendas for closed session consideration, both by the fire district and by the city council. You ascertained if there were any public comments concerning the closed session. There were not. So at 5:02, you adjourned into closed session to address the matters, agendas for both the fire district and the city. Councilmember, board member Amadamos was not present at 5:02, but did begin participation at 5:25. The matters for the City of American Canyon were first considered, and the conclusion of consideration of those matters occurred at 5:53, followed by consideration of the matters for the fire district. It should be noted that there was an additional matter considered under anticipated litigation for the fire district, so that there were two matters. You concluded closed session at 6:26 PM, indicating that you would reconvene at open at 6:40 PM. With respect to both the matters, agendas for the fire protection district and the city council, there will be a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section 54957.1. That would conclude the report at this time unless there are questions.
Any questions from council or private? Saying none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Moving on now to city clerk's announcement pursuant to Government Code 54952.3. It is as stated in the agenda. City clerk, please note the teleconference participants notice, please.
Thank you for joining us for the March 16, 2021 City of American Canyon City Council meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The format tonight will be similar to that of an in-person city council meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting is being broadcast on cable TV, Channel 28, on YouTube, and streamed live on the city's website. You will see the city council members on your screen along with members of city staff. All members of the public will participate in a listen-only mode. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public forum section of the meeting and on each agenda item. When the item you wish to speak is called on, please follow these steps to make sure your comments are read. When the mayor calls a particular item and you wish to speak on that item, click the raise hand button if joining by computer. If joining by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When it is your turn to talk, I will announce your name and invite you to speak. You may see a message saying the host would like you to unmute your microphone. If you get this message, click unmute myself and begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone, dial star six and begin speaking. Video will not be turned on, only audio. You have up to three minutes to make your comments to the city council. At the end of your three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments quickly, and I will mute your audio once you're done. Please press star nine to raise your hand for items you wish to speak on, as the raised hand will be cleared at the end of each item. The agenda for this meeting is available on the city council's page of the city's website. As in the standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time on each agenda item. All votes at tonight's meeting will be taken by roll call. We ask your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This conclude my introductory remarks.
Thank you. Well, continuing on with our agenda this evening, proclamation and presentation. This evening gives a great pleasure to administer the oath of office for Republic Works Director Erica Ammon Smithies. The state clerk will perform the duties.
Hi, Erica.
Hi.
Please welcome.
Thank you.
I think we have some other participants as well, right, Cherry?
Yes, I have one name under Smithies, and then do you have any others?
No, it's my husband. That's my husband, my son.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Erica Ammon Smithies.
I, Erica Ammon Smithies.
Public Works Director.
Public Works Director.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
Support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
Faithfully discharge the duties upon.
And faithfully discharge the duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. A proud moment for your family as well.
Thank you.
Any comments you'd like to make at this time would be appropriate.
I'm just very thankful for this opportunity and hope to make a contribution to this American Canyon team and the community. Thank you very much.
Welcome to having me on board. And certainly, if you're aware of American Canyon, we got a lot of work to do, so good to have you with us. We'll keep you busy.
And welcome to being the Public Works Director during National Women's Month.
That means everything.
Isn't that awesome? I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but it's a great... What sort I'm looking for? Coincidence.
Okay, with that being said, we move on to recognition, March 2021 is National Women's History Month. City of American Canyon Proclamation, National Women's History Month, March 2021. Whereas since 1987, the United States has formally recognized March as National Women's History Month, setting aside March to inspire those globally to learn about women's history. And whereas American Canyon women of all races, class, and ethnic backgrounds have positively contributed to the city by playing a vital role in every sphere of life inside and outside of their home, to build strength, compassion, and to express their vision for this community as it grows. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own right and suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the address for labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements such as the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the ways of science, literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas Seraptimus International of American Canyon encourages City of American Canyon residents to join in the observance of National Women's History Month and to educate and pass the learned wisdom regarding women's extraordinary contributions and on the progress still needed to reach equality. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor of City of American Canyon, to hereby proclaim, proceed 2021 as International Women's Day and proclaim the month of March 2021 as National Women's History Month. Proud moment for our community. I just look at my experience in my own professional area, healthcare and nursing, and the contributions paid, and the number of women who do that job every day in American Canyon, just as part of their daily life. And the caregivers and providers, our elder and children, and leadership in business and industry in American Canyon. The contribution is extensive and certainly something that we show our value, we value. Next would be a certificate of appreciation for David Medina. Good evening.
Hi, David.
Hey, Chief.
Good evening. I think David's here. Actually, David's on the beach in Hawaii. So we're doing this. This is totally virtual, but anyway, we'll... Yep, there he is. Look at him. Look at him. He's showing... He's Waikiki. I can see him. Look at that.
All right.
All right, Dave. Thank you. I just a couple of comments before you read the certificate, Mayor. Dave, this is a big anniversary for Dave. It's 20 years with the American Canyon Fire Protection District, and that's an amazing feat for anyone, but certainly Dave's been a... You know, he started with the department as a reserve in 1997. And talk about staying power. He was hired later on in 2001. Has had been very active in his role in a department as a rescue coordinator. Was instrumental in our team here in American Canyon becoming one of 13 OES Heavy Rescue Teams certified in the state of California, which is amazing for a fire district of the size of ours. He was promoted to a fire captain in 2015, so the last six years, he's been a supervisor and a leader of firefighters on a shift basis. So I just, I want to commend him. I've only known Dave for about eight months right now, but I find him to be an amazing asset to our department, and I look forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that introduction, Chief Cahill. It's my great pleasure at this moment on behalf of the Fire District Board to present this certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to David Medina in recognition of 20 years of loyal service with the American Canyon Fire Protection District. Chief Medina, thank you for... I'm sorry, Captain Medina. Sorry, I forgot ahead of myself. It's an honor to present this certificate to you, and thank you for your service for the people of American Canyon. It's great gratitude from the Fire District Board and the residents of American Canyon to recognize you with this chief. So again, thank you. And enjoy your stay there in Hawaii.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's been a real great pleasure to stand before you virtually from Waikiki today. About a year ago today was when the state of California shut down, and I was right here again worrying whether the state of my family and the state of everyone's health is in question. But thank you for the kind words. It's been a real honor to work for the citizens of American Canyon, and time flies when you're doing what you love to do. And I don't intend on hanging it up just yet. Maybe a couple more years, and I'll be ready to retire. But thank you again. It's been an honor.
Well, thank you for your service and enjoy your time with our family there in Hawaii, okay?
One thing that Chief Cahill did not include in his recitation of Dave Medina's resume is Dave also... So my mom was a preschool teacher for over 20 years. Dave used to help her coordinate field trips for the kids to the fire station. Just fun fact.
That's a nice-looking ride there. What year Volkswagen is that?
That's a 1956.
Yeah. All right, we always got a lot of TLC in that. Enjoy the ride.
Yeah, thank you.
Proud of you, David. Stay safe, man. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
That's right. Mahalo. All right, well, moving on to public comment. Our agenda, have we received any public comment on items not on the agenda?
There. There, there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief Cahill. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one more item there, item A4. It's a... We want to talk... City Manager Holly and I discussed this, and we would like to identify the fact that the city and the fire district, along with our neighbors around us, have worked diligently over the course of the last several weeks to bring COVID vaccinations to American Canyon specifically. And this, and Jason asked that we actually bring it on the council agenda tonight and give recognition to the city staff, specifically, and district staff, and the folks at the county health department and North Bay Health, and the Holy Family Catholic Church, which allowed us to use their facilities last week, just to recognize all the folks that were involved to do this. It took the entire community to bring this to American Canyon. We vaccinated 268 local residents, 65 and older, and a few other folks that were in the tiers that the state requires us to address. I want to give special recognition frankly to Laura Prevention of my staff, who has taken it on to literally be the lead for the fire district and the city in putting this together. She's been amazing, along with Martha Buenwellis. The two of them constantly amazed me with their skills and administrative capabilities. City staff was amazing. The folks at North Bay Health that were providing, the medical staff, our CERT team, public works folks, the police department. I mean, it was just everyone. It was a full court press by all the folks here in American Canyon. And I just want to recognize that we're going to continue to bring vaccinations locally here to the community. We're talking about a major vaccination clinic, hopefully in the next month. Again, a lot of it's dependent on vaccine being available. But we're not going to stop with 268. We want to move forward and help the community become... Get back to normal. So anyway, Jason, you wanted to offer something also?
Yeah, just only to add, really appreciating Chief Cahill's leadership in this. Two weeks ago, the fire district staff and county health staff did some mobile vaccination clinics and some of our mobile home parks and senior care facilities. And this was an outgrowth of that, and really Chief Cahill's leadership and the team over there at the district pulled this together with all the partners that he mentioned. It was a fabulous team. We're looking to do additional operations that would expand that even more, depending upon vaccine availability. But just really wanted to recognize and appreciate everyone that participated and make sure it didn't go unnoticed. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing us that opportunity.
Oh, thank you for your report. You know, I just... As a member of the CERT team, I was given my... I applied for my station there to help with the traffic management. See, Laura Prevention was an amazing leader in that whole operation. And certainly, as you're speaking about the contributions of all members of the city, those who ran vaccinations, the church facility, it ran extremely well. And I certainly appreciate all the work that Chief Cahill and City Manager Holly have done to be able to bring this to American Canyon, and I look forward to more events such as this. I'm supposing probably with the 30-day after the first round, there's usually a follow-up. Or I believe we had Moderna vaccine available for folks this time. So great job. Wow, I just really, really impressed. So many people were impressed with it. I know the debriefing at the end of the day was... Well, it was everybody complimented how well it ran, so it was just good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to public comments. Anything not on the agenda?
Hi, Mayor. We received one public comment on a non-agenda item from Jason Kishnow related to cannabis. We have a hand raised, but there were other additional public comments received, and those comments will be mentioned when the item is called.
Very good. Thank you. We'll close public comment on that portion at this time.
Mayor, there is one hand raised, but I'm not sure if this person is speaking on a non-agenda item. So I'll bring her into the meeting.
Let's see. Inquire and point out.
Hi, Leila.
Hello. Good evening.
Please unmute your microphone.
Hello.
Good evening. Is this public comment on any item that's not on the agenda?
Well, I did have a comment on one of the public hearing items. I wasn't sure if I should do that now or wait until...
There'll be opportunity for that when that item comes up. Bear with it. All right, thank you. Anything further, State Clerk?
No, there are no further additional comments.
All right, thank you. We're now at that point for agenda changes. We have here matters related to American Canyon Fire Protection District Board and matters related to American Canyon City Council. Since there are no agenda changes, we'll move on to matters related to American Canyon Fire Protection District Board. We have a consent calendar.
I'll make a motion. We approve the fire district consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Board Member Mariam Amadamos.
Yes.
Board Member David Orol.
Yes.
Board Member Pierre Washington.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mark Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Yes. Thank you. Matters related to American Council Consent Calendar. Not having any interest in removing an item? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion. We approve the city council's consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos. Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Chair Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph, I'm sorry, and Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Council.
Moving on, all right, the agenda. We're now at public hearings. I will see one whole public hearing considering considered testably post public hearing and receive and file the twenty twenty annual calendar year housing element progress report. Anything on staff report? Or if I covered?
Yes, Mayor. My name is William. Oh, sorry.
Do you have a screen to share?
Yes. Bear with me for this.
There we go.
Everybody see okay and hear okay?
Yes.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Garcia, and members of the public. My name is William. I'm with the planning division and I'm happy to share our twenty twenty calendar year housing element progress report. So just a little background, the housing element was approved in March of twenty fifteen and the state law requires an annual housing element progress report. The report highlights work that's accomplished and the report is sent to the Housing and Community Development Department as well as the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So before we get started with the snapshot of the of the numbers of of housing, I just want to to mention that twenty twenty was definitely a different year for housing than than any other year. It was with the COVID pandemic, a lot of the housing supply chains have really been on pause and and it's definitely a challenging year overall. So twenty twenty, in a nutshell, there are three three tiers that we look at for the state. Entitlements, building permits issued, and the certificates of occupancy. For entitlements, this according to our billing record, billing permit records, we've completed three ADUs and those ADUs had their billing permits issued as well. And for certificates of occupancy for housing, we completed two ADUs has been completed, which were ADUs that were issued in twenty nineteen. Also of note was the Village of Vintage Ranch. While they didn't complete their their CFOs, their certificates of occupancy, about sixty units from five buildings have entered into the temporary certificate of occupancy phase and we're very hopeful that they will get their project completed towards the end of this year, twenty twenty one. Here's the the big board of regional housing needs allocation. The for the city of American Canyon, we were obligated to zone for three hundred and ninety two units in this cycle. And we we completed about three hundred and eighty two units. So we're about ninety, maybe ninety five percent done in the number of units to be produced. However, there's still some work to be done as to the affordability tiers. In the in the gold column is the is the arena allocation and then in the blue column is what happened for building permits issued last year, twenty twenty. So here is a a breakdown of Napa County area median income for last year. The AMI area median income for household of four increased to a hundred and nine thousand two hundred. And for affordable housing, which is up to fifty percent would be fifty four thousand for families. I want to talk about some of our affordable housing funding numbers. Affordable housing, we have a nexus fee and last year we collected about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Most of that came from the Amazon building that was issued in twenty twenty. And then the year before that, we collect about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. As for units, we're we're close to seeing the Village of Vintage Ranch. There's sixteen affordable housing units come online and they will be made affordable for the next twenty years. We did have some program efforts completed in the year twenty twenty in March. We've continued our partnership with the Napa Sonoma ADU Group. That is a coalition of about sixteen jurisdictions between Napa and Sonoma County. We in twenty twenty, they developed new outreach materials such including a estimator for ADUs as well as they began creating model floor plans for folks to use. We were also awarded the LEAP grant for a hundred sixty thousand dollars for pro housing efforts. And that was in March. In August of last year, we updated our ADU ordinance to reflect state law changes. These changes made development of ADUs a bit easier for applicants. And one of the the major changes is that property owners do not have to reside in the in the home of the ADU up till twenty twenty five. And lastly, in September, we received a Cal Home Grant for about two point two million dollars for first time home buyers as well as owner occupancy rehab programs. Want to give a thanks to the Affordable Housing Administration of Napa. They always help us with monitoring programs as well as public outreach efforts and administering administering grants and loans related to affordable housing. So with that being said, twenty twenty one and beyond, we have a few new projects coming online. For entitlements, we will see some more ADUs in the future. We have three that were submitted in twenty twenty one. We also have the Oak Hill Apartments. These are two hundred and ninety one units proposed up on Oak Hill. And they are going to planning commission at the end of this month. This will be that'll be the recommendation from the planning commission. We also received a new project, the Watson Ranch Lemus Point Project. That's a hundred and eighty six units in what used to be called Lot Twenty Four in Watson Ranch. That project was just submitted at the end of February, so it's in review. And then from there, we have a couple of building permits that we're expected to to see issued this year. Watson Ranch, the lots fourteen and fifteen has ninety eight single family homes. They have completed their they're in in the middle of their grading permit plan check and we hope to see their their building permits come in soon. Canyon Estates also have completed their are have submitted their grading permits and we these are for thirty five custom homes north of the high school area and we hope to see the building permits submitted soon too. And lastly, for certificates of occupancy, Village of Vintage Ranch really close to the finish line now. I think probably by the end of the year, they should be getting their certificates of occupancy. As for programs, staff will be working with the Napa City Housing Administration to see if there are new grants in the horizon. And then staff will be looking at the next housing element update, which would be cycle six. And we will begin that along with the general plan update efforts. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. If you have them for me.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation. Questions before we open the public hearing from council?
I have a question on ADUs. You know, there was a when I got on council and it was supposed to be an additional housing stock, but it's only been two. Do we have a total number of ADUs and do we know why there's probably not as many as we thought we might have seen?
Let me see this way. So ADUs are accessory dwelling units and most of the time they're developed by the property owner and there before twenty seventeen, it was still quite expensive. We still had the impact fees for water and wastewater. I think after that, it made it a little bit easier. And people are getting the word out now. I think we have a total of seven in the last two or three years and we're seeing more of them. So it's financing could be an issue, but also just folks learning about the ADU submission process as well. I mean, we've developed from the staff level, we've developed some guidelines for for how to submit them. But it's really up to the property owner if they wanted to do so.
Yeah, so so we've we've seen we've lowered the fees, I guess. Do you get a lot of applications and people back off? And say it's still too expensive or do you just not see them at all?
There's been a steady stream of them. So I mean, we're not gonna we don't have as many as as Napa City coming out, but financing would be one of of the of the reasons, but some sometimes the the project just gets on hold and they they don't come back for a while. So and last year was a pretty tough year also for for doing a home improvement project in twenty twenty.
And Councilmember Oro, if I could also sort of add a perspective. If somebody is just repurposing, say, a master bedroom on the ground floor of a large home and we have a lot of newer houses with that where it really lends itself to a separate entrance. It's very easy to do minimal changes. That's relatively cheap, but it comes at a price in a sense of lifestyle. So you had your whole house to yourself at one time. And then if you repurpose that room, well, now you have now you're a landlord. You've got to take on a business in a sense. And then you have new people living in your home and also so there's a there's a lifestyle issue there where it just may not suit everybody. I think perhaps also maybe in American Canyon where they have larger extended families living in the same home. It could be a cultural thing where we don't really have an extra room because you have family members living there. So there's there's I think a lot of reasons why someone may choose or not choose. If they're going forward and building a whole new unit in the backyard, building it, you know, a twelve hundred square foot house in the backyard. It doesn't matter if we reduce and eliminate fees altogether. It's still expensive and you know, that's just it's it's a it's a big undertaking for just your average homeowner to do. So it's a great idea and it's suitable for, I think, more people, hopefully more as we expand the ability to give people information. I wanted to give a plug to the Napa Sonoma ADU Group. They have great information on their website and they're building their resources all the time. So I think it's a momentum building thing just with with the information side of it as well, apart from financial and then perhaps cultural and then it's a business. It's 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 maybe a little more complicated than it might appear, just sort of adding a house to your existing property.
Thank you.
I'd like to pile on on that issue. I too would like to see more ADUs happening. And I am encouraged that we're we're doing the groundwork. And the ADU Coalition, it sounded like they're developing some model floor plans, which also makes it easier. I think in time, I think some of the homes in Vintage Ranch that are all maybe many are four, five, six bedroom homes. You just imagine that that should lend themselves to junior ADUs. But the other part I'd like to add to that is we do have some housing nexus dollars. I think there was some kind of grants that might be available. Where I'm coming from is at some point, maybe we can offer an incentive that say, look, we can offer you some nominal amount of money to help with the construction or whatever in exchange for essentially agreeing to either low or very low rents so that we can get some credit for the arena numbers as well as provide some additional housing opportunities. So I definitely like to see us working the ADU angle because I do think there's some opportunities there, not just for the homeowners, but also to kind of address arena numbers.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Joseph, you know, back in in my hometown I grew up in in Vancouver, Canada, ADUs, they're everywhere. I mean, they they build them as a new home is built. It's just automatically done. It has been part of the landscape forever. This is all of my life at least. So that's a long time. So I I do agree with you that this is something that that is a momentum that will, I think, will grow over time. I have been in conversation with Lark Farrell. She is the executive director of the Napa Housing Authority. She informed me that ADU grant funds are very competitive because you know, every jurisdiction is trying to get them and and I guess fortunately for American Canyon, this city doesn't qualify as much as others do for for income need perhaps. But nevertheless, we've all seen how the states become much more available with funds. So we're optimistic. We're also talking to Lark about she's been in conversation with the Napa Sonoma ADU Center. And they have really just done a tremendous job with information and and as Mr. He pointed out, they're working on pre-approved floor plans that make it easy for people to find something and build it. So taking some of that uncertainty out. And they're also talking about expanding upon making themselves available to administer contracts to oversee construction of ADUs with grant funds. At this time, the Napa Housing Authority doesn't have the capacity with their staffing levels to take on this new task. But they have the need for it just as we do. And so Lark has been reaching out to the Napa Sonoma ADU Center. And they are really seriously considering expanding their fleet of services to include that, which would be just terrific. Apart from the fact that maybe the grants are a little hard to get, but we'll keep trying.
And then the other issue, I think I brought it up last year, to look at the possibility, if we're going to approve ADUs, which is kind of like a duplex or in some cases a triplex, to also explore the idea of maybe as a conditional use permit or otherwise to allow duplexes and triplexes in our single residential. I know at some point the state may impose that on us. But I think it'd be a good idea if the city explored that. Not so much in terms of just buying up a bunch of houses, bulldozing them and putting in triplexes, but you know, where vacant triplexes, but you know, where vacant lots happen, uh, you know. As we get older or as a community gets older, we're going to have older homes that uh, may be in such bad shape that, that a tear down and rebuild is appropriate. And it might be nice if we allow that kind of flexibility. I think it not only does it increase the housing supply and the affordability, but it provides a little bit of uh, differentiation in neighborhood. It gets it away from that subdivision law. So I, I know we might consider it as part of the general plan update. But I'm wondering if that isn't something we ought to consider as part of our housing element plan or program for the next year or two, so we get to it sooner rather than later.
Um, if I smear the, um, we could look at that at our housing element. Um, just last night on the news, um, heard that the city of Oakland is um, amending its zoning. I know that in the old days, um, maybe even before zoning, um, you'd have neighborhoods that would transition just organically. And you would have, you know, beautiful homes and the next door they tear them down and, and a box would go up with a lot of units there. And so um, one of the real um, efforts uh, with that would be, would be objective design standards. So that new development that is perhaps has more units, but is built in a way that fits into the character of the neighborhood. And the whole thing just kind of blends well together and it gives you some diversity with your house.
Certainly a, a sensitive issue for uh, for building. I think uh, that was probably a year or so ago, uh, Phil just had a tour of uh, Mary Island. And uh, Lenar was building, uh, actually the housing project junior accessory units. It's inside the house.
Right.
The concept being uh, it's uh, the smaller unit is complete. There's a kitchenette, uh, bedroom, uh, bathroom, uh, outside access seating area. Um, the marketing strategy on it, well, when you're the young family, you got all the kids, you live in the big part of the house and you rent out the small part. And then when the kids all move out, you downsize and you move in the small part and rent out the bigger part of the house. So it's a design product that
Yeah.
are quite a few of over there on Mary Island. And maybe that's something to have that conversation with developers in American Canyon since we have a lot of new houses coming.
Yeah, definitely. And, and maybe even consider the duplex and triplex as a conditional use permit to make sure we get those design standards.
Sure.
All right, good. Well, it, to me, it's, it's opportunities. We kind of chip away at the, the affordability issue. And this is a, a good chip.
Yeah. Councilor, any for uh, public comment? There are no objection. Public hearing is open.
Hi, Mayor. Comments from Sandy Sutter.
Very good.
There are no hands raised. So there are no additional public comments.
Do we have a person, uh, did we have somebody wanted to comment?
Well, uh, if I can, just having looked at Sandy Sutter's comment, she was suggesting that we include uh, the option of residential above retail. Kind of that multi-use concept, which
I think that's been envisioned for uh, the Broadway's specific plan.
Yeah. Is that envisioned under Broadway?
Um, yes, it is envisioned and permitted.
Okay. And so we're there.
Very good. Any other public comment written or hurdle?
There are none.
Very good. Okay. We'll close the public comment. Over. For this, action.
Well, I'll make a motion that we receive and file the 2020 annual calendar year housing element progress report.
Oh, second.
Motion second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
I would have public hearing, so the public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code to increase the total number of card tables permitted at Napa Valley Casino. And in the city from 12 to 20 and to permit modern video surveillance technology. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, this is uh, Mr. Ross, the city attorney. Uh, the staff report uh, summarizes the matter that's been before you. Um, concerning the request uh, for the increase in tables by Napa Valley Casino. Uh, the, there is joint jurisdiction on this matter shared with the Department of Justice and as the staff report indicates, there has not yet been clear clearance or approval of the proposal from the Department of Justice. However, the proposed ordinances have been prepared. Uh, and they provide for flexibility for the matter to come back before council, uh, if need be. Uh, the staff uh, report recommends the continuance to date certain April 6th uh, to allow that uh, to occur. Uh, the additional obligation that's um, applicable to the council's consideration of this issue is a uh, judgment in uh, former litigation, which involved both the state uh, gaming commission and Napa Valley Casino. Uh, which requires you to consider any re- request for increase in tables. That's what's, why the matter is before you. But in order to uh, provide more flexibility on this matter and to not have to keep uh, noticing it for a public hearing depending upon the response from the Department of Justice. It suggested that you open the public hearing, comment if appropriate, and continue it to the date certain as uh, recommended. Uh, in the interim, if a matter comes in from the Department of Justice, that can be uh, integrated into your continued hearing. And uh, would provide for a much more expeditious way to uh, treat this request. So uh, that's the recommendation that's before you. Uh, the, again, the uh, ordinances are attachment number two. They provide for the flexibility that I described. Uh, if there are any questions, I'd attempt to answer them. Otherwise, the next step would be to open the public hearing. Mr. Joseph.
Yes, just to, to clarify, it's, it's really two parts here. One is to increase from 12 tables to 20. The other one is that uh, 24/7 video surveillance in lieu of being able to see things from the front door. That latter portion DOJ has signed off on, so there really isn't an issue over that. It's really the, the approval for the, the extra tables?
Uh, I'd say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer yes and no. They've signed off, but in a way that doesn't clarify that they waived the right or they specifically approved the additional table. So that clarification needs to be forthcoming, forthcoming from DOJ. Once that's there, then I think, you know, I don't see any constraint on proceeding forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? Seeing none. Public hearing on this matter is open. Have we received any comment, request for, uh, to comment?
Yes, Mayor, we received one public comment from Jason Kishna.
Very good.
And currently there are no hands raised to comment on this item.
We have a written uh, comment from uh, Jason Kishna.
Yes, we do.
No reason. All right. All right. Uh, with that being said, we will uh, continue this matter to date certain. What's the council's plan?
April 6th. April 6th is the next meeting, uh, and hopefully we'll get word.
Okay. Motion to effect.
I'll, I'll move to continue this uh, to April 6th.
A second.
Motion second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. Continue on in our public hearings. Hold a public hearing and adopt an urgency ordinance for the city council of the American Canyon, amending the American Canyon Municipal Code to add chapters 5.70 relating to hazard pay for grocery workers in American Canyon, which shall uh, take effect immediately as the state's agenda. Okay, so staff report please.
Um, uh, good evening again, council. Um, members of the public. Uh, at your last meeting, uh, March 2nd, you gave direction to bring back a hazard pay ordinance with specific indications uh, with references to other jurisdictions that had done the same. Uh, the proposal before you tonight is in the form of an urgency ordinance that would amend chapter 5.7 of the city municipal code to effectuate that result. Um, it's um, cobbled from several provisions of other jurisdictions that have uh, gone forward and enacted such ordinances. Uh, ordinance or notice of this proposed urgency ordinance was given to the two businesses for which, given the description of the ordinance, it would be applicable. Basically Safeway uh, and Walmart. Um, rather than have the uh, ordinance be tied to specific conditions associated with the pandemic as it has been done in other jurisdictions, this has a uh, fixed period for which the urgency ordinance would be effective for the hazardous, the hazard pay of 120 days from the date of enactment. Um, the proposed ordinance summarizes the authority that local agencies, meaning cities and counties, including general law cities like the city of American Canyon have in this area and have had for quite a while. Um, the, it's not without doubt that it's a matter of controversy. Uh, an ordinance comparable to this, but not of the same limited duration was the subject of litigation in the city of Long Beach in federal court in the United States District Court for the Central District of California. Uh, included in the staff report is the uh, order of that judge uh, denying an application for temporary, excuse me, uh, an injunction on the effectiveness of the ordinance that the city of Long Beach proposed. Uh, our suggestion is to open the public hearing after appropriate disclosures and to take evidence on this matter and address issues uh, that have been common in other jurisdictions. Uh, the extent of the ordinance and so forth. Available for questions, that would be the staff report, uh, unless there are questions at this time.
Questions from council members at this time? Seeing none. Uh, disclosures are important. I will disclose that I've had a conversation on this matter, subject matter with uh, John Riley, Danny Bernardini, and John Gomez of the Napa Salado Central Labor Council. Approve me about the importance of this issue to them.
And, and Ms. Mayor, I too have had conversations with those three, or same three gentlemen. Um, as well as received uh, an email from the California Groceries Association uh, expressing their, their reluctance, uh, or encouraging us not to move forward. So.
And I will make those same disclosures as stated as Vice Mayor Joseph.
And I'll be the fourth to say the same. I, I give the same context.
And I'll make it a 5-0.
Well, I'll include the uh, Grocery Association as a, a email I received in Boston. I think that's important. Okay.
Um, if I may, council, for purposes of the record and to uh, summarize some things that the city clerk might say. Specifically, uh, there's a March 16th, 2021 communication from the Cal- from the Cal- California Grocers Association uh, addressing the issue. There's uh, a letter from the law firm of Morrison and Forster of the same date uh, addressing the ordinance and also referenced is a January 2021 uh, consumer and community impacts hazard pay mandates analysis performed by, for the California Grocers Association um, from Capital Matrix consultant, consulting uh, a gentleman named Michael G. Ganest and specifically by its chief economist, Brad Williams.
Anything further, Mr. Ross?
No, sir.
Fine. Councilor, any for open public hearing? Public hearing is now open on this matter. Do we have any uh, public comment?
Hi, yes. Yes, Mayor, we received um, public, written public comments from the California Grocery Association. Caitlin Bennett, John Riley, Leela Elavitt, Timothy James, Wendy Ramos, William Paratino, G. Anthony Phillips, Stacy Frost, S. Rogers, and Ginger Rogers. We currently have four hands raised. And the first speaker is John Gomez. Hi, John.
Uh, city council, thank you uh, for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Well, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. So um, again, I am John Gomez. Um, I'm a member and representative of UFCW Local 5. I'm also a delegate of the Napa Salado Central Labor Council. Um, I'm also a 13-year grocery worker, uh, and a 20-year resident of uh, uh, Napa County. Um, you know, I wanted to speak today in support of, of the hazard pay. Um, you know, as we, we all know, you know, these workers have, have uh, you know, been working since the beginning of the pandemic, you know, putting themselves at risk. Uh, putting the ri- their, their health of the families at risk. Um, they've dealt with, you know, rude customers, anti-maskers, um, you know, uh, and, you know, they've done it with a smile on their face. They've gone in, they've done their work. Um, you know, they deserve this. Uh, this would go a long way in ensuring that they have, you know, food on their table, um, you know, that they can pay their rent. Um, that they can uh, catch up on bills, maybe even save a little money for the future. Uh, you know, um, again, the work they've done has proved that they deserve this. Uh, the companies can afford to do this. Um, you know, large grocery companies can afford to do this, considering the amount of profits that they've in, uh, enjoyed since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, you know, companies like Lucky Save Mart is a perfect example as they've done it since the beginning of the pandemic. Uh, without cutting hours, closing stores, raising grocery prices. Um, you know, I know that there's threats out there in regards to, you know, this happens, we're going to raise grocery prices and and I just want to make a point that since the pandemic started, grocery price, they've already done it. The prices have already been risen. You know, a, 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 a good amount too, I might add. Um, you know, so it's not a question of whether or not they can, they can, you know, it's just morally whether or not they want to do the right thing by, by compensating their, their employees. Um, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, you know, I will uh, appreciate all the hard work that uh, you are all putting in to get this done. And uh, again, thank you for your time.
Again. Next speaker, please.
Ryan McGilly is next.
Hi, council. My name is Ryan McGilly. I'm an organizer with UFCW Local 5. I want to speak in support of this emergency ordinance.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So as uh, the previous commenter mentioned, uh, these grocery workers have been working in, you know, tirelessly through the entire pandemic. The grocery stores have not closed a single day since the beginning of the pandemic. And they have been dealing with threats of violence to themselves uh, and from anti-maskers and as well as threats of contracting the virus or bringing the virus home by interacting with the public at a higher rate than most of us who are lucky enough to work from home. Um, I know many elected officials and public commentators use the pandemic for clout by banging pots and pans throughout the summer uh, to show Uh, to show the support for these essential workers and um, during this time. Uh, the grocery industry has been making record profits. They uh, initially were giving the workers uh, appreciation pay. Up until June, when all the major uh, grocery retailers across the country colluded together to stop. The uh, payments on the same weekend to prevent any negative PR. To uh, being attracted to one particular uh, company. So I think we as a community should continue to show our appreciation and our support for these essential workers. Who have worked through the entire pandemic to keep our society running, to keep us well fed, by putting our money where our mouth is. And showing these workers the appreciation by adding this additional pay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, next speaker, please.
Leila. What's up, Nick?
Hello, um, I actually did submit a comment, a written comment, but I wanted to be here to read also it to you guys. Um, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you, uh, I work at Safeway in American Canyon, um, I'm part of the home shopping department. You may have seen me running through the aisles on my cart. Um, I've been working there since the beginning of COVID and distinctly remember the toilet paper aisle being completely desolate. Over the past year, I've loaded groceries into hundreds of people's cars. Some wear two plus masks, stay in their car and avoid, avoid interacting at all times. But many others exit their car with no mask and speak to me with maybe a foot distance. The looming threat of the virus is constantly present and there have been several Safeway employees that have gotten the virus, even a close friend. Because of these, because of my concerns, I've gone out of my way to get tested many times. And I've worried for my eighty-five-year-old grandma who lives with me. Furthermore, there are underlying psychological effects of the pandemic that aren't always talked about. Many customers show signs of being angry and desperate. As you may know, there's been one murder of a friend slash coworker. A stabbing and multiple robberies at Safeway within the last year. Not to mention the dozens of verbal attacks by stressed customers. There's no denying that the pandemic has caused a hazardous environment for workers who want to provide good customer service and make a living wage. Please pass the hazard pay for essential grocery and retail drug workers, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Napa Senate, Napa Solano Central Labor Council. Please unmute your microphone, Napa Solano.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, I guess my. You're, you're getting a break tonight because I definitely have a face for radio. Uh, John Riley, I'm the executive director of the Napa Solano Labor Council. Welcome, Mayor, thank you. Um, I want to thank the council for taking the time to, to number one, hear about this issue. Uh, you know. We, we are facing uh, uncharted waters in the pandemic itself and the year that we've, we've had and we, we still don't know the ramifications. Of, of what's going on, there are employers that have voluntarily continued to pay hazard pay, uh, Lucky Save Mart. Uh, it was required uh, during the uh, lockdowns to pay hazard pay and I think what, what we need to remember is. Is those essential workers that are working in that environment can't control that environment. Uh, they're out there working with the public, uh, and they're, they're putting themselves and their family at risk uh, every time they go to work. The companies have, have enjoyed record profits, they've basically had a monopoly on the food industry because restaurants being closed. Uh, people are, are forced to go to the grocery stores. Um, I, I would be pushing for this. Whether or not we were still in the pandemic, because I think we all realize that we made. Some mistakes as we dealt with this from the national level on down and we need to kind of figure out what we're going to do should this. Uh, happen again and so being able to reward uh, employees. That are part of our essential workforce that cannot control their work environment, I think is a value though. And I would hope that you would uh, pass this ordinance. Um, and, and show the community that you care about the, the folks that are working out within your community, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Yes, we have Kenny up next. Hi Kenny, please unmute your microphone.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you, sorry, uh, had to get the mic out there. Um, yes, uh, to, to reiterate the essential worker, uh. Name that keeps coming up for, for our workers, um, by the way, my name is Kenny Scamble, I represent. Uh, the workers for UFCW Local Five. Um, the name just essential worker just seems like a name, there's no, uh, there's nothing behind it. Um, everybody's stated uh, previous to me. The importance in the, the stress levels, the risks, uh, they're not able to control the environment, as John just said. Um, in, in the, in the cities that are paying this hazard pay. As, as of now, are only paying it while it's in this tier zone, in the purple, red, orange zone. Um, I think it needs to be mandated to make sure and ensure um, that these numbers do, you know, increase again. Um, that they have that peace of mind that they're going to be compensated for their risks. To be called an essential worker, a frontline worker. They're receiving hazard pays, so it just only makes sense for peace of mind and safety. Uh, to make this happen. Um, even with the vaccine now, the public is starting to become more loose. And, and, you know, freely going about business without masks, which is increasing the workers in the stores. And they don't have control over that, they're not allowed to even really ask customers with their masks on, so I think this is very important. Um, it's stressful to see what these workers are going through on a daily basis. And their stress levels are through the roof, so um, I hope you guys do the right thing, the companies can afford it. Even if, even if it's momentarily, or, you know, when the numbers are increased, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Next speaker is Alfredo Delgado. Hi Alfredo, please unmute your microphone.
Good evening, welcome, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead, please.
My name is Alfredo Delgado, I'm a representative, I actually represent the American Canyon Safeway store. Um, I'm, I'm just wanting to speak on their behalf, the American Canyon store has been through a lot this previous year. Um, I think the member actually mentioned some of the incidents, um, they have struggled. Um, members are, are working, you know, during this pandemic with. The protection of a three-by-three Plexiglas in front of the check stand, I mean, they're in the face of it every day. I don't think the grocery worker ever signed up to be a frontline worker, but they are. And they're putting their life on the line every day that they go to work and they're risking their family by coming back. And I'm actually want to apologize to you guys that we have to come to you because I think the stores, the companies, Safeway, Walmarts. They should have stepped up, we shouldn't have to come to you asking for hazard pay, companies should do better. They stopped nine months ago. And they turned their back on their employees, they put profit over the safety of their employees. You know, everybody, I, you know, we could tell you stories of everyone that's gone through, you know, everyone that calls me, you know. Saying, hey, I think I came by, you know, someone had COVID, they, they're calling us, saying, let's, we have to stay home. It's scary to everybody, I just want to reiterate that fact that, you know, they have been there since day one, servicing the community. From day one of this pandemic, thank you guys.
Thank you. Is, is there another speaker?
Next speaker is Bambi M.
Hi, thank you, city council, for giving me a few moments to speak.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, I just wanted, I'm actually just calling as a consumer, I'm a customer of the stores. And really, I just wanted to quickly show, um, I don't know, another way of showing my appreciation, when I go through the lines, I'm constantly telling my. Checkers, you know, that I'm thankful that they're working and that they've stayed working through the pandemic. Um, I know it's stressful, I, when I'm in the store for just that half an hour wearing the mask, I'm out of breath. Um, and I really appreciate knowing that they, they work eight hours a day with those masks on. And I just wanted to call, just kind of speak up and say, I support them and I hope that our city council shows support as well. For these poor workers that are just working on that frontline constantly. Um, I think it's well deserved, I think that it saddens me that the companies stopped paying it to them. Um, I believe the last speaker was right, I believe the companies should have continued to pay that for them. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and ask the city council to continue to show support as they have in the past. And pass this ordinance, I think that these workers deserve it.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
There are no additional speakers?
Very good. Well, we'll close public hearing on this time. Back to council, back to council for uh, uh, our discussion on this matter. Comment from council?
Well, I'll, I'll start, I guess, um, first of all, I appreciate all the public comment. Uh, particularly uh, from the customer because clearly, you know, the, the workers are going to be supportive. But it's the customer who may have to pay a, a higher price if that's what actually has to happen, so. I appreciate hearing from the customers as well. Uh, and frankly, I'm a little perplexed that um, the, the store owners or managers have not commented or weighed in other than. Than the correspondence we got today, because I'd like to hear what they have to say, uh, what their responses are, because. This is an issue that we have to weigh both sides, clearly. The hazard pay is entitled, is justified in my mind because the grocery workers. Are almost a unique situation where they're not only an essential worker, but the nature of their work is such that. They don't have all the other options that, that we're encouraged to use, they, they can't do that much social distancing. They can't work outdoors, uh, and, you know, the other side of that interaction, the anti-maskers and others. This is a risk, so they are clearly in hazards, in, in harm's way. And I think it's important that we do something to recognize that and to. Compensate them, I agree with the one speaker who said that the stores really should have been doing this. And I'm discouraged that they did it in the beginning and then stopped some nine months ago. Uh, so I, I'm supportive of the ordinance, I, I'm willing. You know, I, I am sensitive to the argument that, that maybe the effective date, we, we might need to give some time to allow the stores to do whatever. Uh, payroll things they need to do, some modest amount of time, you know, so it isn't necessarily effective tonight, but. Within five or ten days, nothing too long. And, and I am heartened by the fact that grocery workers are now part of the. I think it's phase one B in which they're eligible for vaccinations to the extent that we have supply. So I am also hopeful that a short period of time, perhaps a hundred and twenty days, it, maybe we could do it for less, but. Certainly uh, no indefinite period, uh, would at least address the fact that. I hope we are on the downside of this pandemic. Um, but moving forward, I think as John Riley pointed out, I think the real issue is. We may get something like this again, you know, it may not be another hundred years before we have another worldwide pandemic. We need to have systems in place and hazard pay is certainly the appropriate course of action, in my opinion. And I would really advocate that either the state or the federal government should be doing it, cities, you know. When you get down to the city level, you're going to have a patchwork of, of. Coverage, uh, and it should be far more comprehensive than what, what individual cities could do. So I do support this ordinance, um, and going forward, I would be far more supportive. Of the state of the US government addressing the issue rather than, you know, individual cities such as what we're doing. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Joseph, I, um. I'd like to comment at this point, the uh. Of course, you know, in our deliberations, we should take consideration to all public comment, all written comments we caught. We have received from uh, not only the corporate world, but the, the public as well and the workforce. Um, I'd like to express my feeling on, on hazard pay on that. Having worked in a very high-risk part of Nap State Hospital, there's compensation for working in that area. Because you're at risk of bodily injury. Um, hazard pay for grocery store workers are related to exposure, not only to COVID nineteen. But the uh, the behavior of public, you know, they spoke to a number of uh. Places that sound like confrontation or being accosted by public members of that. I think that's appropriate for that, uh, that hazard pay, along with that comes responsibility. See, by having that, you are now taking responsibility for securing your own personal safety. And following the protocols you need to follow. And also the responsibility of the safety for your coworkers, everyone who works in that store. Uh, delivering people and uh, everyone on the floor, everyone at the cash register and also this public who comes in. And that needs to be recognized and the compensation for me comes from taking on that responsibility. Uh, for assuring with the protocols in place that the workforce and the public are safe. And, and in that extent, I support this, this order. Was a comment? Councilmember Washington?
You're on mute, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, council member, oral, I, I will talk and talk and talk, but I wanted to say, I echo. Uh, Vice Mayor Joseph and uh, Mayor Garcia's sentiments about um. Their one, their disappointment in uh, the California Grocery Association not taking this opportunity to at least uh. Uh, other than sending a, a letter, uh, taking the time to, to make a call like this. Uh, but not to focus on them, I want to focus on the people who did attend and did give their, their uh. Testimonies and uh, the reminder of how violent things have occurred over the last year at Safeway. Uh, we are probably one of the most safest areas to be in, however, this last year has shown us. Uh, what this pandemic will cause people to do. Um, and I'm in agreement that um, we put these young people in uh, an hazard uh, environment. And, and we need to make sure that we compensate them. Um, like uh, the mayor, you know, I was a law enforcement for a lot of years, of all law enforcement officers were frontline people. Um, and for, for our grocery workers just now to be able to get vaccines, um, something's just not right about that. Um, so I, I don't want to belittle, I don't want to keep on going with this because I, I think uh, based on, on my conversation, you can kind of see where I'm headed with it, but. I just wanted to say, I want to thank the callers, um, including the uh, patron uh, of Safeway. You step up because it's basically what you see, what you've seen happen to uh, those employees, um, I've witnessed it myself, so uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, um, when, when we. Not we, just the city of American Canyon, but we as individuals offer higher pay for police officers in high crime neighborhoods. Nobody complains about it, right, because we want our neighborhoods to be safe. Um, I, I believe that this hazard pay is similar, right, people get paid more to take higher risks. Um, one of the speakers commented that grocery store workers didn't sign up to become frontline workers and so. They typically are not paid as, to, they're not paid to take risks, these high risks that they're currently taking now, so um. I tend to lean in, in favor of this ordinance as well, um, I believe it's the right thing to do and I am disappointed that. Um, our local stores, specifically Safeway and Walmart, didn't comment, but also that they didn't continue paying that, making the hazard pay payments. Um, I don't know about you, but ever since the pandemic hit, the. Um, I don't know about you, but ever since the pandemic hit, the lines at Safeway and Walmart that I've been standing in are so much longer, which makes it impossible to believe that their businesses have been impacted. Um, but that's neither here nor there, right? Um, what I want us to focus on is the employees and the risks that they're taking to continue to serve our community. Um, one of the speakers commented about the escalation in crime that's happening and I, and I tend to agree that that's directly correlated with a higher stress that's being put on each individual by the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, I believe the right thing to do would to be to approve this ordinance and I think it should be approved as is for the four-month period, the 120 days. Um, whether, whether the vaccines have fully rolled out by then or not is something that we can assess at that 40-day period. Um, one of the speakers commented that people have become lax ever since the vaccines have been rolling out. Not everyone's been vaccinated. I haven't been vaccinated. I'm not eligible to be vaccinated yet. Um, I'm still wearing my mask religiously. I, I'm so blessed, so blessed to have been able to keep my job and work from home. So I don't see anyone except on a Zoom basis. Literally, I'm at home every day, all day, and I'll make it to Safeway once a week. Maybe, maybe, um, more like once every two weeks. Um, so, but every single time I go, um, I also thank the workers. We now have workers at Safeway who are sanitizing carts. You don't know who's pushing that cart before you. They could be vaccinating, I mean, vaccinating, sanitizing COVID-infected carts, which is an even higher risk, right? If you're physically touching the virus, um, while it's on a cart or you, you know, accidentally breathe the particles that fly up off the carts, however it works, however it's happening these days, um, you're putting yourself in jeopardy. And, and I just believe that if you're taking a higher risk, you should get a higher pay, uh, whether you sign up for it or not. So that's where I'm at with this ordinance at this point. Oh, one more thing. I, I wanted to agree with Councilmember Mark Joseph in terms of, I would be agreeable to not having it enforced immediately, but like a seven to 10-day period to allow payroll changeover and whatever is necessary in that regard.
Well, with that, um, if there's no further comment, I, I will make a motion to adopt, uh, um, ordinance number 2021, next in order. An urgency ordinance of the City of, Council of the City of American Canyon, admitting the American Canyon Municipal Code by adding chapter 5.70, related to hazard pay for grocery workers in American Canyon, in American Canyon to take effect immediately. And I will add, um, a 10-day grace period for payroll. And I don't know how, Mr. Ross, if we, it would take effect, um, in 10 days. Is that correct? Is that how I should say that?
Uh, I think the way that it would be structured is that your motion would be, instead of to say, to take effect immediately, to take effect in 10 days. And that would include then, if you make that motion, modification of section three of the ordinance to also indicate that it will take effect uh, within 10 days of its adoption today. So those would be the two changes. But if your motion, by reading title only, modifies that last phrase, that would affect that result.
As stated by our city attorney, William Ross.
I'll second it. I'll second. Very good. We have a motion to second. Uh, protocol, please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, council. Very important decision to study.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the public comment received as well. Hey, very good. We'll move on now to business item. Do you want to provide update and general, uh, on general fund outlook and preparation of the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Finance Director Lincoln Bogard is going to be up, joining us on the screen as we speak. Uh, I'll let him take over from here, but this is the, uh, first step in our process for looking at next year's budget. That would be the fiscal 21, 22-year budget. So, uh, take it away, Lincoln, and, uh, we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Show us where the money is. Okay, yes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, I'd like to start off by sharing my screen with presentation. And, uh, so tonight, our focus is on the preliminary operating budget, uh, for the general fund in overview. This is kind of the first step in the process to figure out what we're working with as we move forward. And then as we move farther along, uh, we're developing plans with departments to fill in blanks that maybe aren't as easy to estimate, uh, from the finance, uh, department alone. So we're working in tandem with them to, uh, flesh out the rest of the estimates at this time. So, um, we're going to discuss the expected revenues, expenditures, and resulting fund balance impact that we are projecting at this time. And, um, also to lay out the calendar, uh, we're, we're expecting to bring the proposed budget to the finance subcommittee at the end of April, on April 29th. And the proposed budget to go, uh, to council on May 4th. Uh, based on, uh, input at that meeting, we'll come back and bring an adopted budget on June 1st for fiscal 21, 22. So this chart shows a trend of revenues and expenditures for the past 10 fiscal years. Um, and, you know, if you look at 18, 19, it's kind of the peak for the revenues and, you know, expenditures were actually lower than, or, or around where they are in 2021, what we're expecting. Um, but with the pandemic, we experienced, uh, a loss in revenue. In 19 and 20, we held kind of just above, uh, expenditures or were expected to for 2021. And, uh, thankfully, it looks like we'll be able to maintain that trend for 21, 22 while bringing back some of the services, uh, that the city has provided historically as well and some of the cost-cutting measures that we've taken. Um, this slide shows a, a trend over the same period of net income and fund balance. The green line is the net income and that is measured on the left-hand side. Um, and the fund balance is the overall fund balance for the, the city as a whole. And it, it's measured on the right-hand side. Um, and then I've broken that down a little bit further, um, to show um, the composition of fund balance. So we have non-spendable at the bottom, uh, that has reduced over time. That's going to be, uh, fund balance classifications that are not actually monetary in nature or not readily monetary in nature at this time. Um, you have restricted fund balance in the general fund. Uh, I look at this as like a, uh, a gift card to a store. Uh, you, you can spend that gift card on anything that is eligible in that store, but you can't take it to another store and use it. So there's a, a regulation or something that will tell you, these are your expendable categories and you have to spend it within those, those areas. The next level up is the light blue and that's the committed. Um, I would look at this as a gift card, but you as the council own the store that you're committing funds for. So you can kind of choose what you want it to be, but it has to be at the highest level of authority of the city council to put that restriction in place. The yellow is assigned. That can be done through the operating budget. You're expecting, uh, to use money for a certain allocation. It can be, uh, uh, assigned on an annual basis. Uh, and that's how that's done. It could be based on management recommendations that council approves, but is not at the council's highest level of authority. And then the green is the unassigned. And that is where we generally fund, uh, operations when we need to use fund balance to, to, to cover things that there's no classification of what it is limited, uh, for. Um, if you notice in 1718, there was a big increase in unassigned and a big decrease in committed. Um, that had to do with the way the contingency reserve was classified, um, up until 1617. And then, um, our auditors, uh, told us that that classification was only uh, good enough to be unassigned. So it, it had an impact and then council, uh, passed, um, the contingency reserve to make it an official contingency, um, or committed contingency. Um, and that's why it went back up to that level in 1819, has, has grown since that year. For fiscal 21, 22, we're expecting overall general fund revenues to increase by approximately six. I did it to the decimals, but 6.11 in my estimates right now. Um, our tax consultants project recovery from the pandemic to really, uh, become apparent in the second half of 2021, continuing into 2022. This is across all of our consultants, um, from sales tax to transient occupancy tax. Um, uh, property tax, you know, they're, they're looking at, at other metrics, but they see a, a recovery in, in consumption and whatnot in 21 and 22. And taxes still increasing, but it's at a slower pace for property tax. Uh, our expenditure increases, we're projecting a 6.81% increase. Uh, so we're looking at getting rid of the furloughs, uh, budgeting for COLAs, uh, covering, uh, pension and OPEB as well as the increase in the sheriff contract. Um, and when we do that and then have, uh, modest growth elsewhere, we're looking at a general fund net income of about $42,000. Um, some projections, well, will change prior to the proposed budget in May. And as I said earlier, we're working with the departments on estimates not prepared by finance. So areas that I made some guesses on, such as charges for services and, and things like that, we can work with the departments to see if we've over underestimated. Um, but I, I tried to be fairly, uh, conservative on my estimates. Uh, the property tax, we expect about a 1.06% increase or about 125, 124, 125,000. Um, I would state that our property tax, uh, not the actual secured tax roll tax, but some of the other property tax that we get is actually coming in higher in 2021 than we anticipated. So if that happens again in 21, 22, that could actually be, uh, a, a little higher than this projection. Sales tax, we're projecting a 4.58% increase or 118,000. Um, I did speak with our, uh, sales tax consultant and it, you know, um, I think we budgeted this fiscal year for 2.2 million and they're saying we're going to come in around 2.6. So to come in at, you know, 100,000 over that, um, they're projecting really 100,000 increase from year to year for the next couple of years. So I, I feel that that is, uh, a fairly, uh, good estimate. Um, transient occupancy taxes are, um, expected to return to near pre-pandemic levels. Um, however, I would note that, um, I, we did not estimate it as high as 1819, which was pre-pandemic. However, we took into account models that showed how much TOT revenue we received in the summer of, uh, in last summer, and we're expecting it to be at that level this summer. And with the expected return to normalcy or somewhat more normalcy by the end of summer, uh, we felt that also since we're not relying heavily on business, uh, you know, travel and stays, that the projection would be closer to what it was pre-pandemic levels. So I think going from 1819 to now, we're still reducing it a couple hundred thousand, but we are, uh, accounting for, uh, an increase to come back to somewhat more normal. Um, other taxes, so car room, TBID, which is part of the transient occupancy tax, but it's, uh, um, tourism, business improvement, development, I believe. Um, and then, uh, business license tax, um, we projected, uh, the TBIT based on a TOT projection and the others as an average of 1819, so one year pre-pandemic plus the two years during the pandemic at 33% per year. Um, so we felt that this was a, a fairly good estimate. So for example, car room was basically closed for a year. So we, we have almost a year of no revenue in that one. Um, a, a year of lower revenue and a year of regular revenue. Uh, I feel that if the car room opens and, uh, approximates pre-pandemic levels by mid-year, we should be okay on some of those estimates as well. This one did change from the staff report slightly because I had an error in my TBID calculation. Uh, other revenue categories, we assumed awaiting over the last three fiscal years of 50, 25, 25. So 18, 19 at 50%, 19, 20, and 20, 21 at 25% each, except for interest. Uh, I actually made that a 2% growth rate due to lower rates. So, um, this is similar to what was in the staff report as far as projected revenues. Um, however, the, um, other taxes, uh, was reduced to, uh, 378 and, uh, the interest and rents, uh, was reduced, uh, going from 5% to 2% only made about a $10,000 difference though. Or maybe 12. So we're looking at total operating revenues of approximately, uh, 22.3, 22.4 million in the general fund for, uh, 21, 22 at this initial, uh, outlook. Um, that, uh, brings us, uh, closer to the levels we were in 1819, but still not, uh, showing, uh, full recovery uh, from that level at this time. Again, if our charges for services and some of the other items come, uh, we determine should be higher, that could change. Uh, expenditure assumptions, uh, again, ending furloughs, that increased cost by, uh, almost 388,000 in salaries expenditure. We are assuming a COLA of 2%. Um, the February CPI estimate for this, uh, consumer price index estimate for the San Francisco area was 1.6. The MOUs have a 2% floor and a 4% ceiling. So as long as it doesn't go over 2%, it will be the 2% floor. Um, so we'll, we'll monitor that, but right now our assumption is, is 2%. Uh, pension and OPEB contributions are based on actual actuarial reports. Uh, uh, prior, they're from last year's reports prior to the roll forward that we're doing this year. So we, we don't have to do actuarial reports, but the projection is that pension expense uh, will increase 175,000, uh, primarily due to a reduction of the discount rate, um, for, uh, at CalPERS. They're going from 7.15 to 7.0. This is the last, uh, projected discount rate change that they have forecast. Uh, we knew it was coming. Um, they are giving an option going forward for, uh, agencies to choose between two uh, pools, one that will be 6% and one that will be 7%. The investments will all be the same, but it'll just be for your funding, are you projecting out at a 6% growth or a 7% growth? Um, so that will be something to determine in the next couple of years. Um, so that will be something to determine in the next couple of years. Um, the OPEB expense, we're projecting uh only a one percent increase. Uh, sheriff contract uh is listed in supplies and services and that contract increased about three point five percent. So our operating expenditures, um we we have assumed uh what I told you on the previous slide, and we've also accounted for slight growth from uh last year's estimated actuals um to to help bring back such things as park services that that have been reduced over um the pandemic timeframe. Um, and to make sure that we're not cutting programs that we have previously funded. Uh, for twenty one twenty two, there were some reserve assumptions. So uh the committed uh contingency reserve, we fund at three percent of prior year general fund salaries each year until a target of twenty five percent of general fund expenditures is reached. So we did assume funding that in twenty one twenty two. And after that, it will be approximately five million or about twenty two point three percent of general fund expenditures. Uh, we also are looking at funding the committed capital projects reserve, which increases a hundred year, a hundred thousand per year until two million is reached. Um, after the funding for twenty one twenty two, it will be at one point six million approximately. And then we, the assigned economic development reserve is unchanged because it's already at the target levels. So our our fund balance, um, our net income currently as projected is low at forty two thousand. Uh, which means our, we'd be using some unassigned fund balance uh so that we could cover our committed and assign or our committed contin- uh reserves. So that is the reason why the unassigned fund balance uh goes down from year to year. We also made some assumptions over prior years on non-spendable and restricted fund balance uh that may change, but based on projections, we would estimate they'll come in around there. Um, next steps, um the, our goal is to resume all services and if possible, potentially implement delayed projects without incurring a general fund deficit. Uh, in corp, we're incorporating departmental input into the proposed budget estimates. Uh, we've gotten feedback from several departments already and uh awaiting the final uh uh inputs this week uh to incorporate. Also, on March twelfth, uh President Biden uh signed the American Rescue Plan Act into law. So we'll be incorporating that potentially into the budget, or we will be. Um, it's a three point eight five million approximately for American Canyon. It's a non-entitlement allocation. Um, and we've uh several of us have attended some trainings uh on eligible uses and we're looking at potential ways that we could use the money to benefit the city and the community. Um, and um we'll be bringing that to also. Um it it comes in two tranches. So the first uh half of the receipt is expected. Uh, it goes to the state within sixty days of it being signed into law. I believe the state has thirty days to provide it to us. Uh, but they can uh request an extension. So at this point, we're not sure if the first half is going to come in right before the end of this fiscal year or right after the end of this fiscal year. But either way, half comes a year after that. So there there are two halves. One will come near near the end of this year, near the beginning of next, and one at the end of next, beginning of the fall. Uh, it does all have to be spent by end of, by the end of two thousand twenty four, so December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Um, are there any questions so far on the presentation? I will be handing it over to um Maria for K P I next.
I, yes, I I have a few questions. Uh, I don't know about anyone else. Let me start at the high level. We're showing a net income of about fourteen thousand, but we're going to use two hundred and twenty thousand of our unassigned reserves. So in my thinking, I I find that hard to to reconcile. Usually, if you're using your unassigned reserves, it's because you're generating a deficit. So can you explain how we can have a net income and use our reserves at the same time?
Well, it's the unassigned is going down, the reserves are going up. So the committed, which is the contingency reserve and the uh capital projects reserve, those two are going from six point three eight six million to six point six three nine million. So they're increasing almost four percent. If we don't fund those, then yes, our unassigned fund balance will go up.
Oh, okay. Now I get it. Um, second question, in the details, uh, have we plugged anything in for community group funding or for a multicultural program or anything like that?
In this version, we kind of did a a percentage growth for the non uh estimatable ones. Uh, but as we've moved forward with the departmental input, I know that we have budgeted already in our extended bu- budgeting module for uh community grants. Um, as far as the other items uh go, that is something that we can look at as we move forward.
Okay. And then um the structural balance, uh, have you had any opportunity or guess going forward? Will you be analyzing one-time revenues versus one-time expenses vis a vis ongoing revenues and expenses? So we get a sense of how solid we are going forward.
Sure. So um, I know that um that we were looking that at that in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And without those one-time uh sources and savings, it it would have been a a much larger hole that we were looking at. Um, we we would have been closer to originally estimated at like a half a million uh deficit or net net loss uh for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Um, in twenty one, twenty two, we haven't really moved in to the one time as much yet. Um, I, for example, I am going to be sitting in on a call about uh with the the Government Finance Officers Association to learn about uh grant opportunities that are available to local jurisdictions. It's specifically for uh local municipalities. And I'm going to be uh sharing that information out with the departments to see if there are any ways we can bring in either one-time grant funding or even ongoing grant funding that can be reapplied to year after year. So that's not something that really has been addressed specifically in this uh initial uh proposition here, but it is something we are working on.
Hey, um, Lincoln, do you want to give a little update on the long-term financial forecast that I know we're just sort of kicking off?
Sure, we um are uh working with Municast. Um, and we have provided them financial information going back for a decade as well as monthly inputs going back for the last uh since twenty fifteen sixteen, they're current. And we are developing a twenty-year look-forward model. Um, you know, obviously, the further you look, the less, the foggy it gets, but uh it has the ability to look uh forward twenty years. Um, we're looking, we're putting in projections that we're getting now. Uh, for example, with property tax, they give you H D L, our consultants have provided a a methodology for doing a five-year projection. So if we can get like a five-year look forward with uh ten years behind us, populating beyond that um will become a little more reliable than if we didn't have that uh input from the consultant to provide information on on that.
Uh, and and as I've said a few times before, I I still think we need to revisit our capital project reserve because a hundred grand a year i- is not even close to what we need. But I'm looking forward to finance analyzing the numbers and giving us some guidance on what we really need to target.
Right. And while it's a hundred thousand a year, um, we we are uh going to be at about one point six million by the end of twenty one twenty two.
Yeah.
And the target is two million. So that would be, you know, something we could look at, whether two million is a a reasonable target um to to have uh some input for council on a decision um uh that we could come back on later.
Yeah. It it's my standard soapbox, the rest of the council can confirm that, but we do need to be looking at it. Because my guess is the two million might be what we need to work at each year, not just a lump sum, but that's another challenge. I appreciate the information. Uh, I'm I'm glad that we're getting it this early and and look forward to the finance committee where I'll be able to be really obnoxiously detailed. Thank you.
So uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I got a couple of questions too. First of all, thank you for the report. It's good to see things are moving in the right direction, which I believe is up and to the right um for the most part. Uh, I do have some questions and I and I'll I'll just piggyback off of uh uh Vice Mayor Joseph's capital reserve project. This has kind of been uh, I've I've been hearing him say this for years, and I think it's finally a earworm in my ear. Um, I want to know if we get this two million and we get to this goal, uh, what what do we do with it? If we, can we just apply it to something and spend a million dollars on parks or or something and 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 then do we have to go back to a hundred thousand dollars a month? Or is it the two billion that we're trying to have as a base? I don't really understand how, as a council, we can direct you to apply this. Can somebody help me understand why we have capital reserve project funds and what they may be used for and how we may use them?
So certainly. So as a committed, that means that you have set this as a priority through your your uh decision-making, making progress uh process. So if we undertake a project and you uh direct us to undertake the project using fund balance that is for a project that is related to that capital project funding, we can do that. And yes, as long as you don't change the existing policy um that's in place, that would trigger that hundred thousand dollars a year replenishment until it reaches two million again.
So we we can't touch it until it hits two million, is that what?
No, you you could use it now.
I can use one point four two million today if I wanted, if.
If if council decided that they wanted to undertake a capital project that that met the the criteria and you said, yes, use it for this project, yes, you could use it now and it would just go down to zero. And the the policy would say, you know, you have to fund it one hundred thousand a year continually until it reaches two million.
Understood. So there's the the policy of the savings on it, but then the discretion of actually using the funds is on a year-to-year basis kind of thing of how we want to allocate it, correct?
Correct.
All right. So um, I I I know, Lincoln, you just joined here, but Mr. Howard, do you recall when was the last time we used this and and how we've used it in the past?
I was actually going back in my mind, thinking about that before you asked. Um, I recall at one point, one of our um playground replacement projects, uh, I want to say two fiscal years ago. Uh, the council and it was relatively modest amount, either fifty or a hundred thousand, I think, was was the amount. And uh, we we used it, it was a mid-year appropriation. Uh, it wasn't part of the original budget. It was a uh, a decision to to dip into that um and to to make a mid-year appropriation for it. And um, some of the nuances around that policy is uh like like Lincoln explained, it's for capital projects, but it's it's meant for um a projects that are already in the C I P or significant kind of high-profile type projects. So it it's not uh necessarily meant to be your more routine maintenance sort of things. It's meant to be where you put aside a little money each year for bigger ticket-type items, um particularly those that are in your C I P or that are going to be a higher dollar value. The idea being you're going to get a little more cost effectiveness from a singular larger project than spending a smaller piece of money, um, you know, more periodically. And so um, the the points that the Vice Mayor Joseph has raised is, I don't know how long ago that policy was created. I don't recall when the two million dollar mark was set. My my notion is it was a while ago and a while ago, two million dollars may have been a lofty target. These days, two million dollars doesn't get you as far because of inflation. And so his point has been that two million dollar number doesn't really even represent the right target level, given some of the known capital needs. Um, but I I don't, I I recall, I don't recall the details exactly, but I think it was two fiscal years ago, we used a little bit of it on a playground replacement uh project.
Yeah, I don't know if it's playground replacement, but I do recall that um uh covered shelters came in out of the, out of the blue one year, I think it was a heat wave year and, you know, we got shelters at Shenandoah and stuff. And it was like, where did this money come from? And it might have come from that.
I think that was another funding source. Did we use it for the skate park renovation?
It could have been. And my, that, that, it could have been Vice Mayor Joseph. I I I can't recall the sequence of which ones were funded where and it 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 could have been the skate park.
Okay, and so.
I think the important thing is that it gives us flexibility.
Yeah, no, I I understand what it's used for and and what it could be. So I'm just trying to think about how we can come to council on a regular basis to where we can discuss in 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 public and make decisions of how we may apply it from a year-to-year basis. We just came off of strategic offsite in Jan, was that January? Yeah, it was in January. We'll discuss these things, but every year I see this number. Um, and every year I'm like, well, what do I get to do with it? And it kind of just sits there for a hundred thousand. If I wait until it gets to two million, you know, I might not even be here anymore, right? It's it's, 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 it a hundred thousand may not be enough. And um so I'm in favor of revisiting this capital project reserve policy now that I have a better understanding. Sorry, it only took me three years, Mr. Joe, Vice Mayor Joseph. But I get it now and I wanted to really understand that because listen, every year we hear about things that could be funded, but we don't have the funding for it. But it is a priority to the community and thinking through those things and bringing it up and asking the community to come back to us. You know what? A million dollars well spent one year on improving a key project that is not necessarily um um has dedicated funding like um our roads, right, or or the general fund uh and things like that. I think it's worth revisiting. So I would love to see this come back to us in some way to where we can revisit this policy. And if we could afford it, could we do two hundred thousand a year? And so we get half the time in terms of getting it up there. Uh, because this city is still young, there's still a lot of improvements that need to be made. And I think it's it's very worthy of that. Those are my comments on that. And I have one more question on something else. Uh, chart three in the staff report, income and fund balance graph. Uh, which is the blue one with the green line.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, I I I'm pretty sure it was in the reports in the paperwork somewhere, but I was hoping somebody here could articulate this for me. We look at this chart really, um, you know, I think the housing crisis was in in the late twenty teens and, you know, we didn't really feel the effects of it and it looks like we felt the effects of it as property tax later uh at the beginning of this, of the last decade. And and then it just precipitously went down. And I'm wondering, you know, was all, was, I don't recall twenty fifteen, sixteen uh being the low point in property tax income um and the fund balance going down. Will can you guys remind us what happened in those years? Because I I I believe that was the upswing year.
Uh.
And and Mr. and Mr. Robert, I don't think you would know the answer unless you're at a municipality that experienced the same thing.
Yeah, I think I, one of the things to to keep in mind, uh, Councilor Oro, is that this graph is actually telling two stories. The the numbers on the right are are fund balance. That's associated with the blue yeah, infill. Then the the green line is associated with the net income. And so um, you know, what what it's showing here is the fund balance. Um, and and that's a good point. I think, Lincoln, that's probably a good way of of also kind of explaining it. There was a period of time in two thousand thirteen, two thousand and sixteen when our expenditures, and that's the red line here on this graph, when our expenditures exceeded our revenues. And in those two fiscal years, uh, the the, and at that point, when your expenditures exceed your revenues, you end up in a in a deficit situation. And so in those deficit years, we drew down on that fund balance. The fund balance didn't go negative. It went from you know, roughly eleven million to nine million. And so um, it it's showing some variation. you know, roughly eleven million to nine million. And so, um, it, it's showing some variation. Part of what was going on in this time period, and, and part of what you see in this chart is and would almost be better, better reflected in a rolling three-year average, because part of what was going on in this time period are some um, not as accurate sort of projections and estimations, right? And so you, you see in the very following year, uh, if you go back to the other chart, I think, uh, Lincoln, that might be helpful. You go back to the, if you, if you go to this, the, the very next two years, we have revenues uh, exceeding our expenditures, right? Usually what you want to have um, is to have these lines roughly parallel each other or be, be close to each other. When you have um, when you have wide variations in them, there, there's either you're, you're not uh, fully grasping all of your revenues or expenses. You're not projecting them uh, as accurately as you could be. Um, or you have something happen, you know? In, in this case, those two, you know, you have a period of years where our expenses are exceeding revenues and then you have two fiscal years where the opposite happened. If you look at the three-year rolling average, those curves will be roughly smoothed out. And so these weren't event-driven, as in a recession caused something to happen. What was really going on in this period was our ability, and this is some of the work that, that I mentioned before that Lincoln's working on, our ability to forecast revenues and expenses and to really have an understanding about what we think is going to happen and that to have that actually come to fruition was a little more challenging than those periods. We, we, in, in one year, we had more expenses because our revenues didn't come in. The following year, the revenues came in more than we expected. And so that had some effect on fund balance. But in, at the end of the day, the fund balance has still gone up over time.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
All right. With that, I'll turn it over to Maria uh, to discuss the key performance indicators.
All right. Well, good evening. Um, I'm going to just briefly cover the draft key performance indicators that are in the budget staff report as attachment four. Um, council members, as you might recall, we got together on January twenty ninth in closed session um, to review and update the strategic plan. And part of our discussion at that time, including added, including, included, included adding a component of strategic plan um, that was built with um, key performance indicators. And the intent was to inform the council on the city's performance and delivering services to the community. So key performance indicators basically involve collecting and analyzing data that help an organization measure performance internally and in our case, service delivery externally. Some, as an example, some outcomes of KPIs or key performance indicators include um, using the data to inform decisions about operations, communication, and service delivery. So in essence, for us, the, the KPIs are an extension of the seven strategic plan goals. And they help to measure success and also help to find areas with an opportunity for change. Next slide, please. So while the report has a more extensive list, um, really what I'm interested in covering with you is is the, the process of how we develop these. Um, the KPIs were developed by reviewing the International City County Management Association Performance Management website resources. Um, they have, gosh, you know, more than thirty years of data um, and processes and analysis on KPIs for local governments. So they've got very reliable suggestions on um, what to measure. And, and we also worked with each department and division to identify relevant KPIs to the services that are provided by each of the department and division. And so, um, although performance or key performance indicators are not new to American Canyon, what this is, is the beginning of a working document that's going to help us set a new baseline of data so that we can move forward um, and measure the success and identify areas for change. Um, we really see this as an iterative document and we drafted it with the intent of coming to the council semi-annually in tandem with the budget. So our hope is that when we come to you with um, budget updates, we'll also have some reports on how we're doing um, in terms of success and areas for change. And we may find other areas that we can um, measure as well as if we can receive quantitative data. Um, and as I said, this, this isn't necessarily totally new to American Canyon because the annual budget documents that we printed and produced in the past have had about a three-year history of performance measures by department. Um, there's a couple of key distinctions, but basically the transition from performance measures to key performance indicators differs in that these are tied to the strategic plan and they're, they're going to be measured more against targets. We're going to start to look for targets. Um, one of the things that, that is, you know, fun to use acronyms with KPIs is KPIs are SMART, S M A R T, um, uh, specific, measurable, um, attainable, results-oriented, and time-bound. And so, so those are some of the overlays that we'll be um, thinking about as we begin to collect data and analyze and analyze. Um, so the KPIs bring together the goals of the city council through the strategic plan and also through the budget, the financial plan that aids the implementation of our goals and the work that is completed by staff to help meet those goals. And so attachment four in the staff report includes the proposed draft KPIs with each of the goals. And um, these, these KPIs are definitely different. They might seem a little similar to the performance measures, but they're, they're definitely different and um, more expansive. And so with that, um, if you've got any comments, obviously these are draft and as I said, this is a document. If you've got any comments or concerns, happy to, questions, happy to take those.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add onto what Maria presented, um, and thank you for that, Maria, would just be to, to note that not any one of these KPIs is going to tell the story. It's really the collect, the collection of all of them and the, and the comparison year over year is what's going to tell the story. There's not one in here that says whether we're meeting our public safety goal or not, but it's the whole story. When you look at all this data, when you look at the baseline and then subsequent data, you'll start to see, you know, what is this data telling us? Are we ensuring American Canyon remains a safe community? There isn't just one metric. It's, it's all these bundled together that tells that story. Uh, but thank you for that, Maria. And certainly if you all have questions, um, happy to answer them.
I appreciate the uh, the work done on this. This is uh, that'll be key to a lot of things in American Canyon. I'm looking at the one on economic development, uh, by technical, that's the uh, key performance indicators. Uh, you know, I was thinking, uh, this is dealing a lot with the business and development side of uh, our activities. Uh, we often get uh, questions or critiques on uh, timeliness of uh, processing like permits and things like that. I think it would be helpful to add something like that there. Or wherever it is that you feel best, but I think the key point is that we're tracking that. And of course, as we all know, a lot of times it may be something that's uh, tied up on the city side or tied up side on the applicant side. And kind of keeping track of how long the balls in each court or what the issues were, I think might be a way of uh, getting some quality improvement measures uh, for us ourselves in terms of what we might be able to deliver more effectively in, in both parties' interest. So I would, uh, might see something like that.
And so, you know, actually just to comment back on that, um, we do have the average number of days for first project and plan review. Um, is that what you meant, Mayor Garcia?
I think the uh, it's the whole process.
Okay, so from start to.
Start to finish, yes. You know, I put in my, come to the counter, I want to build a X. Okay, well, response is, is what you need to supply. Alright, so the clock starts. It's in my court to fill it out. I can't be complaining about you not responding to my effort if I haven't delivered it to you. I delivered it to you and now, what, what can I expect it done? Well, kind of, what it is to be. Yeah. We need to include more information here.
Yeah, I would, I would also add that a, like a dashboard or some type of, or visual, visual, so you get at a glance, you can kind of look at it and tell, okay, we can see where we're progressing. We can also see where we might be, you know, having challenges. Uh, for a quick glance, that's really, really helpful in a, um, KPI.
The other, the other thing to kind of follow up on the mayor's comments on the processing time, you know, it is going to take a while to kind of drill down, but, but if we said, you know, from the day you apply for something, you know, and it, and you may want to break out what kind of permits we're applying for, from, you know, repairs on your house to building a new commercial center, but from the date you apply to the date you're issued a, a permit to, to identify that timeframe. Uh, and because over time, we may discover that the issue is how many reviews that goes. You submit your plans are reviewed, you get back. If, if you have to analyze them two or three times, that, that may be an indicator that, that there's something, there's, there's a mismatch that we begin to develop performance standards of what we would expect the ideal process to be, and then we can compare ourselves. So using an example that I just brought up, maybe the problem is we're not clear the first time we see the plans. And so maybe we catch half the mistakes and, and you lose a lot of time getting a second setback and then catching the rest and so on. So that over time, we, we use this as a method to improve our effectiveness and our efficiency. And, and if you say, this is what I want to accomplish, then back into it and say, okay, what metric would I need to do to help me figure that out? And that's what I'm saying. Maybe how long it takes from when you apply to when you get your permit, that's the beginning of that exercise.
I mean, how clearly does your, the applicant understand what?
Yeah, it, it may be that the applicant puts together a poorly, a poor package and it's going to be difficult to sort through it all. Or maybe we're trying to have a turnaround so fast that we're not being thorough.
That's unrealistic. Yeah.
So it, there's a whole bunch of things, but the first step is figuring out we're not, we're not processing it as quickly as we ought to. Let's start drilling into it. Let's start.
Well, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily even, if we're not processing it as quickly as we ought to, if you analyze the detail of it from applicant and city side, you're going to find out where the, where the obstacles were, where, where, you know, where the uh, uh, where things slowed down and why, you know, uh, uh, I'm not in that situation where, you know, it's, it's always seems to fall on the head of the city staff. I can't get my project done because you're too long in processing it. Well, sometimes we have found out during these deliberations, well, yeah, but you know, it got delayed a month or two because you didn't give us anything. You know, or if we're doing multiple levels of review, okay, so we schedule it, um, what, where is it on the calendar for this level? And then, oh, where's it on the calendar for the next level? Well, that could, what? An hour later, two days later, whatever. So it's, it's tracking that. It's a lot of detail. You know, having worked in uh, quality improvement areas in my work, that type of information you need to sort out to say, okay, here's the opportunity to improve. Yeah.
For some examples on those, so we can get data for you and find some correlations on timing of application, um, permit issuance, maybe even like the commendare. We'll have to look into that. We'll, we'll look into it for sure.
Thank you.
The, the other comment is there are some of the issues that are in the strategic plan are, are project-specific. Um, getting Watson Ranch developed. Well, that can be broken into a whole bunch of smaller pieces, but they do have start and stop dates. So some of the indicators are, are going to be milestones or dates versus numbers. So if we could see some of those things where we've clearly identified some key projects uh, that we need to work on.
Yeah, acknowledging successes.
Yeah, I, I, and that's a good point. I, I think what you're talking about, uh, Vice Mayor Joseph is probably something a little bit different than how we're viewing the KPIs. What you're, you're probably referencing is some of our key projects and the schedules and whether, you know, completion date, are we on time? Are we behind? And some of those projects or key initiatives in it. Um, certainly worthy of having in a budget document and, and sharing, um, you know, with, with the same sort of regularity. Le-, probably less sort of data monitoring and this is more schedule, um, product schedule sort of monitoring. So, and it was, it was a conversation I had with our, our new public works director even today. So we're having lunch and then kind of talking about, you know, our process for identifying project schedules and for tracking progress and behind or, or on time and those sorts of things. So certainly something we'll keep in mind as a way to display them, not necessarily in the same vein as, as, as the KPIs, but dashboards, again, you know, uh, uh, dashboards are an easy way of showing that too. So you might see a, a dashboard with, with relative KPI performance and then dashboards on projects and, and um, very, very similar, very, very similar tracks.
Yeah, yeah. Good, good. Other comment from council? We're uh, catch up with this.
There's no action tonight, Mayor. This is.
No, this is more informational type of, uh. Okay. That concludes our business, uh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Comment?
Yes, go ahead. Public comment?
Oh, yeah. You, you guys have to do public. I, I already commented.
Hey, public comment on this item.
Yes, Mayor, there is one hand raised. Janelle Selick.
Very good. Well, the comment is open.
Hi, Janelle.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Uh, Janelle Selick, Executive Director of the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation. Um, interesting discussion. I've been listening in. Um, so as you're discussing the budget tonight, I wanted to share an update on an ACCPF project that's beginning to take place at Clark Ranch. Ever since the master plan was completed several years ago, the idea of an environmental park has excited the community. Since full development of the master plan is many years away, ACCPF would like to take the lead on the fundraising, development, and installation of a community-based eco-center. An environmental building, or what we're calling an eco-center for short, is identified as a key element in the existing approved master plan. Now more than ever, wetlands is an incredible resource for our community and daily use of the area has only increased during COVID. As people flock to wetlands, it's clear that major program and education opportunities exist. ACCP, ACCPF would like to develop a site that the community can use for a variety of programs, including conservation programs, summer camps, nature art, open house Saturdays, trailside talks, school-based programs, nature play, and more. The eco-center idea will complement the two existing users, Spirit Horse and 4H, and help deliver on an amenity that is already identified in the master plan. A formal scope is in the works, but in the meantime, I wanted to share our idea with council and staff. As you plan for next year's budget, we ask that you be open to the idea of supporting the development of the eco-center. We encourage shared use options with the city and are open to a variety of partnerships. Through this project, we can significantly expand outdoor recreation and education opportunities in a way that preserves valuable city resources and has minimal impact on city staff. This project also benefits several goals listed in the city's key performance indicators, which were just discussed. The city and ACCPF share a common vision for the Clark Ranch project. Through resourceful partnership, we can bring the master planned ideas to life for our community in a timely manner. So thanks for your time tonight. I just wanted to put, give you a heads up on the project and we hope to continue the conversation further.
Thank you. Look forward to that conversation.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Is there another speaker?
There are no further comments, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. No, this item is informational. Moving on to management staff report reports.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have a couple of uh, management reports. Uh, Mike, do you want to start first with Jim? Is he available?
Oh, I, I'd love to, Jason. Thank you. I'm going to try this. I, Jerry, Jim's in the participant group. Can you let him in?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, Mayor Garcia and council, I, I've, I asked Jason if I could uh, introduce Assistant Chief Kaminsky this evening at the end of the meeting. Um, he was patiently waiting, but frankly, he was, he was uh, participating as a board member at the Lake County Fire Protection District, which he is a member. Um, uh, this, at, tonight, at the same time as your meeting. So luckily, um, your meeting went long enough for him to be able to finish up with the fire district meeting and show up here. So um, I, I'm, I'm responding, I know, responding to a couple of you, specifically um, uh, Councilmember Oro, because he goes, who is this guy? Does he actually exist? So I, I wanted to, I wanted to bring him in this evening and then introduce him to the, to the council slash fire district board and let you know that he does exist. He is, he is definitely um, supporting me um, with the department. And um, we are, as I promised you in the past, that
And we are, as I promised you in the past, that we are bringing to the board the, the training program that I've been promising for the last several months. Jim is, is going to be helping with that process and hopefully the next, next couple of months, we'll be able to actually provide that after we do our May 30th, or excuse me, our March 30th meeting with the handbook and all the other things that we promised. But I just wanted to let you know, he, he does exist. Unfortunately, he's not showing his face tonight, but I'm going to turn this over just for a quick minute and have Jim introduce himself to you. You're on mute, Jim. Jim?
Hi, Jim, please unmute the microphone.
We still don't think he exists.
She's not convincing. She's behind the fire curtain, yes. This is.
You know, you know, Big Bird had him like this.
There he is.
There he goes.
Hello, good evening, welcome. Speak into the mic, Jim. Well, I, I don't want, I, I don't want to take any more of your time this evening. That was a, was a nice try on, on my part, and I appreciate it. Jason gave me the opportunity. We'll, we'll get better at this. I know, I promise you, I promise you he'll be, he'll be at the, the March 30th Fire District Board meeting, and you'll actually get to see the guy's face. Thank you both for the work you're doing, and we'll look forward to that report. Thank you.
Chief Cahill, since we're in a meeting, Big Bird had an imaginary friend, too, just so you know.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate that.
There's a joke about something like this, where you walk away and you say, okay, next time, just think how much you can make off the bet next time. We're all going to be betting big time that, that Jim Kaminsky doesn't exist.
There really is a Jim Kaminsky.
I've seen him, I've met him, he's nice.
Jason will vouch for him at least, yeah. All right. Okay.
Moving on, Brent and Creighton both have updates for the council.
Okay, good to see you again, council members and, and Mayor. I have three quick updates for you. Willie mentioned two of them during the housing element update, but I wanted to elaborate a little bit more on them. The first one is the Ode Hill Residential Project. That is going to our planning commission next Thursday. The application was submitted in August. The environmental review was completed in December. We had a 30-day public review, and we're ready to take it to the planning commission next week. We had last week a very good conversation with the Open Space Advisory Committee. The project includes a public trail that will take advantage of spectacular views, and we had some very informative, helpful input from the Open Space Advisory Committee and the public on that. So pretty excited about that. It will go to the Airport Land Use Commission on its way to the city council for your consideration a little bit later in the next month or two. The second item I have for you also mentioned is the Lemos Point Project. We intend to name the street leading into the project Fran Lemos Lane. So pretty excited about that. I think it's really well deserved and excited about that. But the other part that's very interesting about the project, apart from it being deeply affordable, is it's the first of its kind that will be modular construction. There are other apartment communities in the Bay Area and elsewhere built this way, but this will be the first of its kind in American Canyon. And so we had a great meeting with the applicant last week and talked about that, kind of coordinated. There is a role for city inspection as part of that, and we're getting that all ironed out so that when the time comes, we're all ready. Modular construction is much faster to build than stick built, and so that's a terrific thing. And so we're looking forward to that moving forward. It will go to the planning commission for approval. And then finally, next week, we're having our resurrecting the circulation, general plan circulation committee. We'll be having our meeting with them a week from tomorrow, and we'll be sending out eight alternatives for them to look at, at their leisure for West Side Connector roadway configurations. And so pretty happy about that, getting some progress, kind of back in the saddle, hoping to be able to bring to you some recommendations from the committee and moving that along forward. So with that, my brief update.
Thank you. Lot to look forward to.
Creighton.
Evening, council members and Mayor. I have four quick updates for you. The first one, we had the first of three conservation oriented projects that happened out at the Wetlands this last weekend. We had a great turnout there. Actually saw a couple of council members even walking by and chatted with them, so that was great to see. We have two others still coming up this, later this, this month. One is a partnership project with RCD to do some acorn planting out at the Newell Open Space. That's this Saturday from 10 to noon. And then we have our initial kickoff of our trail crew. That's a dedicated volunteer group at the Newell Open Space that is starting on March 27th, Saturday, March 27th, also 10 to noon. And speaking of March 27th, the second update item I have is on March 27th, the whole day, Napa County Search and Rescue Team will be out at the Newell Open Space doing a training exercise, familiarizing themselves with the Newell Open Space in the event that they have to respond out there. So if you happen to drive by or you hear from residents, constituents, that there's a, a large, looks like emergency services present at Newell Open Space on Saturday, March 27th, it's because there's a training exercise that's going on, on that day. Next two items are some fun items. We have our Fun Fit Trail occurring tomorrow out at the Wetlands from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's a fun walking activity with some zany fitness activities mixed in. We're hoping to get some good photos out of it. You might even see a leprechaun and a pot of gold, given that it's St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. My last update is actually going into the early part of April. Much like our Truck, Truck, Trick or Treat Street Halloween event, we're hosting a bunny hop Easter drive-through activity on Saturday, April 3rd, from 10:00 to 12:30 in the aquatics parking lot. Please join one of the several community groups that are going to have different bunny hop spots along the way, or bring out your family to enjoy some fun, some Easter, spring fun. Manager Holly, that's all I have for an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Creighton, that was great.
Oh, a lot of fun stuff happening. Great.
That's all we have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Moving on then to Mayor Council comment, committee reports, and after that, we'll do future agenda items. Let's see, we did get three reports from Vice Mayor Joseph and Councilmember Oro. Councilmember Oro, anything further to add to yours?
Nothing to add further.
Okay. Vice Mayor Joseph?
I'm just happy I got mine turned in before the agenda came out. That's my new announcement.
Well, good job. Councilmember Abadamos?
Just doing a lot of working from home and sheltering in place still.
Don't get out and go grab a breath there at the park next door.
You know, it's, it's funny, because a lot of committees and commissions that I'm on are starting to talk about meeting in person again, because many of the members have already been vaccinated, but I'm the one delaying it all. And I'll call.
I'm understanding from, of the, of the vaccine works being done in the county, it's probably going to be maybe April, May, somewhere in that window, depending on, if it was the President Biden, there's going to be a flood of vaccine coming out, so hopefully that's there. Councilmember Washington?
Yeah, rookie mistake. I, I could, had a hard time opening up the application to put the, the information in it, but I won't, I won't have that problem next, next meeting. But real quick, I wanted to welcome again our public works director, Erica. Just say thank you and welcome aboard. Congratulate my boy, Fire Captain David Medina. I think he's doing a great job, 20 years of valuable service. And Creighton, you know, nice job this weekend, and also for you and Solan, the support that you gave to Vanessa Chen, who accomplished earning her rank of Eagle Scout. I thought that was outstanding. So again, unseeing things that you guys are doing for the community, to better the community. Ms. Chen, she's going to be one of our future leaders, I'm sure. So just want to take that time out and also remind everybody that next Tuesday at 6:30, American Canyon Middle School is having an African-American Coalition meeting, and they changed it just so they would have it not conflict with the city council meeting. So if you can make it, or if you don't know the information, just email me, I'll get the information to you. It's 6:30 next week.
Let me think. I'll write it down. That's at the middle school?
It'll be virtual.
First one is going to ask, is it real or virtual?
It'll be, it'll be virtual.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so there's a Zoom link, it'll be there somewhere. Okay, well, a lot of activities going on late. Some a lot of fun, like Canyon Community Parks Foundation have their artwork in the park, heart, our parks, so that was, it was a good fundraiser for them. So it's a group comes up with a lot of very creative ideas on, on the fly, and it's just, it's just good to see that type of energy. State Route 37, some more update on projects, potential, some of this to inform new members on that. Priority sale of Section 8, that's between Infineon Raceway to Highway 101. So they have to raise the highway bed a little bit, just enough. They have some inflatable ladders when it floods and some pump systems. So given the rain so far this year, it doesn't look like that's going to be a big problem, but certainly that project is years and years out. The estimate right now, probably about $2 billion. What they're working on right now is a short-term project, maybe taking care of the next 10 years. Final completion could be, who knows how far out, and maybe 50 years or more. North Bay Watershed Association, well, one of the biggest issues that came up in the, just in the comment side of it, was the water supply. It's pretty drastic for Moran in Sedoma County. You know, they don't have the North Bay Aqueduct like we do. They got the Russian River, and that's probably their biggest source. So a lot of discussion on water conservation coming from being imposed by jurisdictions that the drought warrants it. And right now, as we all know, it doesn't look terribly encouraging. I really, again, I'd like to really compliment the city staff and Chief Cahill and Fire Department, all their staff, all the volunteers who came out to help with the vaccination clinic in American Canyon. That's something we have been needing for a long time, and thank you for getting it done. And this, I think in 30 days, we'll have more follow-up on that from those who got the first series of vaccines. I think it was Moderna vaccine was the one they used. Certainly Holy Family Parish provided a very excellent location for that to manage traffic, and it seemed to go extremely well. Laura from the county did an outstanding job, I think my compliment is to her and all the work she did, and all our city folks who helped out as well. CoEd just continues with food access surveying in American Canyon. We're still getting a lot of people show up. A lot of that is through either Kiwanis or Community Action Upper Valley Food Penetrator, the two big organizations that are doing it. In my assignment to American Canyon Cert, sometimes they're helping assist with traffic management. By the way, they, they do an excellent job with that. They have reputation for being able to provide that service throughout the valley, it's really grown, and it's a lot of it's attributed to just, you know, the leadership of the organization. Powell Helms does an outstanding job. Well, the big one today was the CoEd General Meeting. CoEd Community Organizations Assisting in Disasters, 61 attendees this, this morning on that. It's all the family services support systems in Napa County. And it's, I have to tell you, it's incredible that we have this. It was the amount of work they do. The volunteer hours are added into the millions of dollars, something like 3 million plus dollars if you were paying them average wage, they'd be burning on the outside. Everything from food distribution to animal rescue, helping people with disabilities, limited access, communication, a lot of seniors don't have social media or cell phones or things like that. How do you communicate with them? Well, then just more one-on-one, face-to-face. And certainly limited English-speaking, Spanish-speaking communities are certainly another one that they help out. They've also helped out with housing issues, people who lost their houses and the fires, or some of it due to the pandemic, trying to help them with that. Volunteer coordination. So they went out, they put out a notice out there for people who want to help out, 350 volunteers on standby, so they can plug them in with any of these areas that are related to pandemic or a fire. The organization started back in, well, the earthquake, 2014, bit of a hiatus there with the fires in October 17. That's when I got connected with them, and they said, wow, this group is really at the ground level, taking care of it, and the, they need that appreciation and, and support for what they're doing. It is quite remarkable. That would conclude my reports. I want to move on to future agenda items. I'd like to have a, you know, traditionally for Eagle Scouts in American Canyon, we do a proclamation, and I would like to arrange to have a proclamation next meeting if we can, for Vanessa Chen for her achievement. That is, you know, I was a scout myself growing up, I never made it to Eagle. My older brother did. We kind of lived in a very remote area, very far from being connected on opposite sides of the county and Riverside. But you learn skills, you learn responsibility, you learn interaction with people in a way you don't learn it anywhere else. And the, it's a, an achievement that stays with that individual a lifetime. In many places, it's very recognized for what it really is. It teaches you civil responsibility, safety issues. And fun things, my first merit badge was beekeeping, believe it or not. Lived on a ranch, and they'll order the Hackscrew Stairs Roebuck, and finally my dad, when he took it over, says, what do I do with 50 gallons of honey? You sell it. Of course, not at the price you get today, but I think it warrants that, just, this is a remarkable young lady with her achievement. And I know this could be very important for them. So I'll be in touch with scout troop leadership and see if we can't get that moving. The other thing I'd like to have, maybe, well, more of is a community spirit thing. Look at what's happening with James Road. Now, that tells me, knowing several people live along that street, that we need to have some kind of celebration when that thing's done. I mean, thanks to have an opportunity for a street party for American Canyon, and somehow we ought to be able to do that, I'd say probably by the time the paving's done, and we're still in the red zone, or we can do a socially appropriated, but acknowledgement of that work. That is a huge improvement on that street, and it's not only American Canyon residents, it's all our neighbors driving through all the time, too, we know that. So I'd just like to offer that for something we could do. Any other future agenda items, reports, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to get an update on our two-year work plan, if we could. We want to go through the formality of making a motion that we agendize it. We, manager and I had talked about it, it may also be something we could do in coordination with, with the annual performance review as well, but one way or the other, to get an update on where things stand. Why not?
Yeah, we, we ought to do this and then keep with the, the formality, so at least our minutes and our record reflects how these, how these items come, come to be.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Joseph, to your work plan, what, what are you referring to? Is it the one that came out of the planning, the offsite?
Right, yeah, the, the January 29th work plan, where we're at, milestones, deadlines, those kinds of things.
I, I will second that.
Thank you. Hey, roll call base?
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. All right. Any other future agenda items, requests or reports?
And then to the mayor's comments, I think the proclamation certainly makes sense for Vanessa and a street party on James Road. I don't know if we need council action as much as we just need to show up.
We, we go through the, the formality of We we go through the the formality of agenda items, meaning consent or business items that will take a staff report, that sort of a thing, with the proclamation, it seems appropriate. It's a standard practice for us, and I think it's a good idea. Um, some sort of gathering on to celebrate James Road. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay, I think just, uh, think about it. That's a huge achievement in American Canyon. Yeah.
Well, then, whatever we do for James, we need to do for Devlin, because that's
Yes.
That's uh even bigger.
Well, yeah, and uh, and the West Side Connector, will we get that done soon? I mean, absolutely. Let's see, let's acknowledge the work that staff have done and achievement made and express gratitude for it. Right? Good. Anything further, council? See none? Uh, then we have concluded our business review. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.
Good day, buddy.
Bye-bye.
Karen?
Hi.
Good night.